Hey, welcome, everybody. I'm going to call the November 6th Board of Education Finance Committee meeting to order at four o'clock PM. In attendance for board members, we have Ms. Martin, Ms. Schwartz, Ms. Kerr, and Ms. Noel. Sorry, I'm going to be completely blanked out. And we also have Dr. Johnson and Ms. Olson at the board table. I know that we have Dr. Frank Williams and Dr. Anne Williams presenting for us, and we have a little bit later, Ms. Hennessy will be presenting for us from Raymond James. And I think that's who we have presenting for us. So we could start with the presentation of the proposed 2023 board tax levy.
Good evening, or early afternoon, it feels like. Well, hello, hello. Good evening, Board President Kerr, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Johnson, and the entire U-46 community. Tonight, Dr. Frank and I will present the estimated tax levy for the tax year 2023. Our agenda includes a review of the timeline, the estimation process, and our next steps. Establishing this year's tax levy requires three important meetings. The first meeting is the first meeting is tonight.
Dr. Williams, real quick, we can't see the the screen where the presentation or the presentation isn't showing up on our screens.
Okay.
I don't think you have to share it. You guys share it in the back?
Not necessarily. There we go.
There we go.
Okay, thank you. Establishing this year's tax levy requires three important meetings. The first meeting is tonight. We're upon approval by the Board of Education. We will consider the estimate of the tax levy. The second meeting on November 20th will be the truth in taxation hearing, which is required by law. And at the third meeting on December 4th, we will bring the approval, a recommendation for approval to the board for the actual certificate of levy. The board determined, the board is required by law to determine or estimate the levy at least 20 days prior to adoption of the levy. So this process does require a three-meeting process. This slide provides an overview of the difference between the tax levy and the tax extension. The tax levy is actually what is requested. It is an estimate, and it is based off of several known and unknown factors, which we will get into a little bit further into the presentation. Whereas the tax extension is the actual dollars raised by property taxes throughout our communities. The extension is calculated using the prior year's extension and inflationary indicator, the Consumer Price Index, as well as taking into consideration new property and the values of existing property throughout the district. It's important to remember that while we always ask for more in the levy process, the actual extension is no more than requested and no more than entitled to by the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law. And we'll get into that a little bit more in the next few slides. This slide provides an overview of the factors used to calculate the tax levy. As previously mentioned, we know what the tax extension was for the prior year. We know what the inflationary indicator is. We know what the maximum is as it relates to that. When the Consumer Price Index is over 5%, we are capped. As you can see from the slide, it is 6.45%, but it is capped at 5%. So the maximum levy extension for the existing property that we will receive is $331,619,396. Another known factor is TIFs, also known as tax increment financing, which we will talk about in a in a next slide. There are several unknown inputs, and it's interesting because the timing is very important here. We're estimating the levy in December, but the actual property values won't be known until the spring. The actual limiting rate won't be known until the spring. We have estimates for new property now, but those won't be known until the spring either. Interestingly, for this levy, we have expiring TIFs that are also an unknown entity at this time, and we'll get into those a little bit more on the next few slides. Now I'm going to turn it over to Frank to provide additional insight on the factors that inform our estimated levy.
All right. Good evening. And first, what you see here is the Consumer Price Index. The Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, PTEL, we'll refer to it as PTEL throughout the rest of the night, wasn't acted in 1991 and pertains to all of the counties that U-46 is in. The law limits the amount of our extension to CPI, the Consumer Price Index, or 5%, whichever is lower, and sets rate caps on certain levies. This chart shows a history of the CPI. Remember, the district under PTEL can only receive 5%, receive the lower of 5% or CPI in new revenue. Here we can see that the CPI average during a 10-year period has been 2.38%. This means that, on the average, during each of these 10-year periods, the district only received 2.38% in new revenue. This percent has not kept up with salary increases. Considering that, as we are in a very tight hiring market for education, requesting a 5% increase last year and this year will help U-46 stay competitive. A CPI decreases below 5%, which is it is predicted to do, the district will only be able to receive an increase of new revenue of CPI. Think, if in order to stay competitive, salary increases were 4% per year, and the CPI dips below 4%, the district may not receive an increase in revenue that matches raises. This is a factor that we take very seriously when we consider our fund balances. When it comes to the tax levy, another term usually associated would be your tax rate. This diagram shows the direct correlation between CPI, the Consumer Price Index, the EAV, the tax rate due to PTEL. If the EAV decreases, the tax rate must increase in order to generate the revenue needed. So focus in on the bottom left. Think back to the Great Recession of 2008. Assessed values were decreasing as the housing market was failing. However, the district still needed to operate at the same level as years before with revenue from taxpayers. In order to generate the revenue needed, homeowners saw an increase in the tax rate. Now, consider the housing market of the last three years, where assessed values have been increasing. Again, the district still needed to operate at the same level as years before with revenue from taxpayers. In order to generate the revenue needed, taxpayers saw a decrease in tax rate because the value of taxable properties was higher. But remember, it is important to note, the tax rate and assessed valuations are done at the county level and not by the district. District U-46 is unique in that our tax base resides in three different counties. Every year, we analyze the revenue and percent realized in each county. This input helps us to recognize EAV trends and have an understanding of where proportionally our revenue comes from. Cook County reassesses its properties every three years. Reassessment means that there are boots in the ground, actually inspecting your properties. The Cook County 2022 EAV, which we just received here in October, was reassessed with a 25% overall increase in EAV. This does not mean that the taxpayers will see a 25% increase in their EAV. The 25% actually represents an average throughout the entire U-46 County tax base. Historically, it is not uncommon for the EAV to decrease in Cook County the following two years after reassessment year. For the '22 tax year, DuPage County property valuation saw an average EAV increase of 6.16%, while Kane County property valuation saw an average EAV increase of 7.56%. So once we know the input of the CPI, which Dr. Williams covered, maxing out at 5% per PTEL, we know the previous year's EAV, which we covered, and the county percent overlap. Once we know these things, then we have to consider our new property assessments, which is outside of the PTEL law, the 5% or the CPI calculation. Here we see an historical look at new property. While new property is a small percent of the whole, this tax year, we know that there will be a significant TIF impact to our new property value. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Williams to provide additional information regarding TIFs.
Hello again. This slide provides an overview of all of the tax increment financing districts within our boundaries. Tax increment financing districts are a tool used to restore and jumpstart economically challenged parts of our communities. Typical projects which utilize TIF revenues include road repairs, sewers, removal of environmental contaminants, and incentives to attract businesses without tapping into the general funds or raising taxes of the community. In the year a TIF goes into effect, the value of that property is frozen for the entire length of the TIF, which is typically 23 years. While the TIF is frozen, the growth in value is used to fund the projects identified to improve the area. Once the TIF expires, the growth, also known as the TIF increment, is returned to the taxing bodies as new properties. As indicated here, the base value is shown in blue. That is the frozen amount. During the 23-year period, the growth is shown here in gold. As you can see, the growth varies significantly based on the TIF. While the district has 10 TIFs across five communities, as shown here, there are two TIFs that are particularly important to our tax levy this year. Those two TIFs are circled in red, the first one being the Bartlett Quarry TIF. That TIF is expiring, and as a result, the value to be used for the tax levy increase goes from $3 million to roughly $92 million. Additionally, the village of Stringwood has informed us of their plans to retire the Butita Drive, the Butita Drive TIF, as of December 31st of this year, a whole year earlier than planned due to the success of the TIF, as indicated on the slide. The base value of this TIF was $114,000, with the total value currently estimated at over $9 million. The success of this TIF is noteworthy, as TIFs are rarely closed early and with such a substantial amount of growth. The next slide shows the tax levy versus the extension, what we ask for versus what is actually billed to our taxpayers. As I stated previously, we always ask for more to account for the unknown factors in the process. As you can see here, the blue the blue columns show what we requested, and the yellow columns show what we actually received each year. This year, our ask must account for the unknown value of the TIF properties, as mentioned. So we will be requesting a larger amount to accommodate for the unknown factors associated with new property, especially the two TIFs that we just discussed. We make an educated estimate. We look at our past to compare the levy to the extension, and this allows us to see if the data inputs we are using are appropriate. As discussed earlier, the levy is based on a highly estimated EAV, which equates to a high level of risk. So we estimate high, and then the county brings it down to the 5% cap that we discussed. Now I'm going to turn it back over to Frank to provide additional details regarding this particular levy as it pertains to each fund.
So far, we've educated everybody on the key terms and some data points, right? These are things that we have a good refresher every year. So now we're going to figure out the why, right? The why behind our ask. Here's a look at the estimated tax levy for tax year 2023. 50% of the actual revenue received from the final extension is received in FY24 this current year, with the other 50% being received in FY25. The bonded interest levy is determined by our repayment schedules, which are known by the counties. The counties know that U-46 needs $32.7 million to service its debt payments. Because of this, bond and interest is not subject to PTEL to the 5% cap. The amount shown here only includes known debt. Future debt payments, even after the issuance of the new bonds per the referendum, will be designed with the intent to remain similar to our current payments so that the bond and interest repayments remain flat. Understanding our why starts with knowing where we are today. This chart shows our most up-to-date estimated year-end fund balances for FY23 for our operational funds, which are the Ed Fund, O&amp;M, and Transportation. The actual fund balances will not be known until the audit is complete, which should be around the end of November. Knowing the fund balances creates a good baseline for understanding if additional revenue is needed to support the goals and strategic plan of the Board of Education. The district has created a purposeful surplus with foresight focused on building construction and improvements, as well as educational objectives. The estimated year-end fund balance for 2023 includes the movement of $45 million into capital projects for the preparation of Hawk Hollow construction. Additional expenditures associated with Unite U-46 will impact our future fiscal years. Again, the why starts with where we are today. This chart shows our most up-to-date estimated year-end fund balances for all funds, for all funds. Actual fund balances, again, will not be known until the audit is complete, which should occur at the end of November. Knowing the fund balances gives us that good baseline for understanding additional revenues. We are also able to see which funds need an influx of revenue in order to make them whole. Additionally, we analyze the funds where expenditures are restricted to see if our fund balance and revenue will match expenditures. For example, the IMRF Social Security Fund can only have expenses associated with paying these retirement and tax payments, so it's a restricted fund. No other expenses like supplies or salaries can be charged to that account, hence the name restricted. We analyze the fund balance for estimated future expenditures, so we look at the fund balance, predict future expenditures to determine the amount of revenue needed in order to make these payments. As mentioned, the IMRF and Social Security Fund is restricted. By knowing the fund balances and analyzing historical and future spends, we have determined that we can strategically spend down our fund balances this year. It's important to note that in addition to tax revenue, this fund also receives revenue from our personal property replacement tax, or PPRT, which is a state tax placed on businesses. As discussed, back with our FY24 budget, this state-determined allotment has been at an all-time high over the past few years with an anticipated decrease back to historical norms. Considering this fact, we still believe we can spend down some of our fund balances, and we'll continue to monitor this fund in future tax years. Another restricted fund is our TORT fund, which is intended for expenses only associated with managing risk. The fund balance is currently negative, as we know, so we are levying an amount to make this fund whole. Additional consideration is for a risk management plan that the finance department has on its goals to complete this year. This plan will lay out specifically the expenditures in the TORT fund with an anticipation of an increase in expenditures in future years. So we've discussed key terms. We've given you some data points. We've tried to understand our why, and now we focus on our next steps. The estimated levy request is greater than 5% of the previous year's extension. Because of this, the district must hold by law a truth-in-taxation hearing. The hearing will take place at the November 20th board meeting. The public will be notified of the hearing through a publication in the Daily Herald, not more than 14 days nor less than seven days before the date of the public hearing. It is important to note that this increase does not apply to the debt tax levy. As promised through the Unite U-46 initiative, the successful referendum will not increase the debt tax rate. The debt tax rate will remain stable. Because our district covers three counties, the impact of property taxes on each property is unique to each homeowner. Here, we look at estimated impacts. These are estimates, impacts of the property extension on the market value of a home. Remember, even though the district is requesting more than 5%, the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, or PTEL, limits our increase in new revenue to 5%. Again, these numbers are estimates, and everyone's tax bill will vary depending on county, city, or village, and applicable exemptions. These estimate estimated increases are not associated with the debt service levy, as they only apply to our capped funds. We've discussed all the details that go into our educated estimate for the levy, which, again, as Dr. Williams mentioned, is our ask. Our ask will be for 7.98% increase in revenue. However, because of PTEL, the county treasurer will reduce our amount so that it does not exceed the PTEL limit of 5% because CPI is greater than 5% as we showed earlier. So the most we can receive in new revenue again is 5%. This excludes new property, which will take into consideration the expiring TIFs. This will also exclude debt service, which will remain stable as previously promised. So in summary, Illinois school districts typically request more than they receive due to unknown factors that Dr. Williams had covered. U-46 is requesting an increase of 7.98% for capped funds. The debt service levy will remain stable as promised. Once the final EAVs are determined, the county treasurer will reduce the total amount extended to 5% in accordance with PTEL. And it is the counties, it is the counties that will determine the final extension and the rates in the spring of 2024. So with that, we welcome any questions.
Board members have any questions?
Ms. Martin? So, thank you so much for the presentation. My questions are regarding the TIF specifically. So, first question I think is pretty simple. So, the expiring TIFs, which on Slide 10 are shown in the yellow, are considered new property. So those, the first year, would have a property, a tax levy amount of the 7.98%. But then, in preceding years, those properties then fall to the capped amount, correct? Because they would no longer be new?
That is correct. The first year, we collect them as new property, and then after that, they're existing property.
Okay, and then as far as the blue versus the yellow on this chart, I know that sometimes with TIFs, just as counties try to renew them, do we know for sure that these are expiring and then?
We've received formal notification on both of them from the villages.
So then, as far as the others, like Elgin, are these all, or maybe see some of these cities trying to renew?
Yes, some of them are in talks about extending some of them, yes.
All right, and then do you, like, typically, when do we know on TIF renewals within the process of all this?
Extend, you mean request for extension?
Yeah, like how that that timing of that process.
That that typically, that varies. I know that in some communities, if they are planning to re-boundary a TIF and maybe add other areas to a TIF, they would start that conversation earlier. But sometimes they will just wait until it gets really close to the expiration date and let us know that they'd like to extend it. So it really depends on what the plan is. Oftentimes, they redistrict, and so those will have more of a lead time. If they're waiting until the expiration, then they're not trying to change the boundary. They're not trying to adjust the TIF. They just want more time to continue that development because it hasn't grown at the rate that they would like it to grow at typically.
So, and like, for example, like looking at your chart, Route 20 in Elgin, like, I think that, like, not saying that they would, but that appears to be something that might fall in that based on the blue versus yellow proportion amount.
Yes, that is a very good assumption.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Kerr?
I have a question about timing. I know that our property taxes get split between our two fiscal years. Now, Cook is late, but we still get the the property tax for '23 from them, because I know they just came out with the property tax bills.
Cook is the anomaly, so it really depends on on when they when they pay us.
Okay, so did we get enough for 20? Did we get the first or the second? I'm not going to say this. The the section of the '22 taxes that was supposed to go to fiscal year '23, did we receive something?
Well, the good news is we're always 18 months in arrears. So with with how we receive the taxes, so that's enough time to even cover the delay with with Cook County.
Okay, that was my general question. And then to follow up on the TIF question, owners of these businesses aren't suddenly seeing a huge tax increase. They've been paying the taxes, but it's just been going toward the development, the TIF, the TIF fund, is that correct?
That is correct.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions myself. Dr. Frank, when you said that the the average increase in Cook County was 25%, does that include all taxing?
So Cook County does their boots in the ground every three years in our portion, right? They've got, they divide Cook County into three different portions, and they do our boots in the county every every three years. So the other portions, as I mentioned, typically after they do a large increase, you'll see a decrease on average. So the other portions were probably large increases in last two years, and they'll probably see a decrease in the next couple of years.
But does that include all, like, does it homeowners, commercial property, that that's an average over the collective county for anybody paying property taxes, right?
Yes, for the for the northern portion of Cook County, that's the our piece. So there's the northern, there's Chicago proper, and then there's the southern suburban piece, so for our portion.
I I'm asking that because I I think I'm probably the only board member that has the misfortune of living in Cook County. And mine went up substantially more than
More than 25%.
I wish it went up 25%. Mine's up 40. So the reason why I mention that is just to present that to you. For your knowledge, there are there are homeowners in Cook County that got hammered, hammered, right? And so I guess my there there's been talk, and and this is probably not something that you can you can answer right now, but I mean, there there has been talk in the media that the reassessment was perhaps less favorable to homeowners than commercial properties. So I don't know the process, like, I know that we every year we look at appeals, right, and 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 contest some of the appeals that are that we don't feel are fair to the district. At this point, with the the amount of, I think, kind of collective pain that's happening in Cook County right now, like, what what is, do you have any sense of how much we actually recapture from commercial properties that maybe were benefiting from appeals that they're able to to, you know, they have the the backing, the financial means to do appeals where homeowners commonly do not, right? So do we have any sense of how much we might be able to recapture from that? And is that any kind of a significant amount? Does that make sense?
It it does, and we can certainly provide an update on that data during our public hearing. We can work with our attorneys to look at the appeals that are out there and to quantify that information for you.
I'm a little bit leery about the the one slide that we showed, just just given the fact that there's been this huge reassessment in Cook County this year, where we show, you know, the slide that has the typical, you know, effect on a homeowner, because that's going to look drastically different for a lot, a big portion of the of the district. I don't know if we need to put a disclaimer on that or or something, because it's it's just, it really, this this particular year with that kind of reassessment, it's not real helpful, I think, I mean.
We can certainly update that on the upcoming presentations as it relates to the to the public hearing. We can certainly update that on the upcoming presentations as it relates to the, to the public hearing.
Yeah.
And we can also highlight that um, it typically goes down the year after reassessment for people. So there may be some relief in your near future.
The other thing you may have to address is if you go, I'm looking at the Cook County Property Tax Portal. And at the very top, right above where you type in your address, it says Maria Pappas, School District's Hike Property Taxes on Cook County Homes Businesses. So forget the reassessment, they're gonna blame the school districts. So.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, a pretty egregious statement when, when you have assessments that have gone up on the whole, on average twenty-five percent, but individual assessments have gone up even higher. When you can see that reassessment, right?
Hmm.
We still only raised our taxes five percent. So.
Well, we will certainly.
That's all we raised, so yeah.
We will certainly make it a point to um, address those items in our next presentation.
Um, my second question goes back to the TIF. So, so as those properties now begin to fall under our tax rolls, like how does that? And, and I guess, you know, the, the one for Bartlett is kind of substantial, right? That's, that's a fairly big TIF that's coming offline and, and putting a lot of money back into our tax rolls. How is that typically felt, given the fact that we've got, you know, this large district and three different where there's counties? Is the effect of that typically felt more in the county that those properties are in, or is it kind of equalized throughout the district?
I'm just thinking through your question. So your question is regarding how it impacts the overall TIF?
Right.
Well, if it were, um.
Well, and I, I guess, I, you know, because that property is in DuPage County, right?
It's in DuPage and Cook. I believe there's a small portion of it that is in Cook. So if it were, I would say, I would suggest to you that if the majority of it was in Cook, it would have a domino effect on the other counties because of the timing of how late Cook is. Um, but because the majority of it is in DuPage, it shouldn't have as significant of an impact. Because we know the DuPage data in a more timely fashion than we typically do for Cook County.
Okay.
And I think if you go to, you know, the slide where we show the CPI with the EAV and the rates, right? So now all of a sudden you put ninety-three million into the total EAV for DuPage, right? So you're raising the EAV, which then and per the slide would typically then show maybe perhaps a lower tax rate for our DuPage County.
But because we get the information from DuPage sooner, then it makes it a little bit easier on us.
It makes it definitely easier.
Try to, to figure out how that impact, okay.
Hmm.
All right, those are my questions. Anybody else, Ms. Martin?
So I want to go back to what um, you were talking about, because I would like to confirm what you're saying about the Cook County. So the slide that has like the property numbers. So we're saying, so like a, a, for your home example, since, you know, since you brought up your own property. So if you're saying, when we're trying to make sure that our, our homeowners understand, so in Cook County, a home may have previously been estimated value at two hundred thousand is now three hundred thousand. For example, like, because the, right, so they're seeing a three thousand dollar tax increase, not due to us. But literally the assessed values on their home has gone up, so all the taxes they're paying. So that's what you're saying, like the numbers you guys are seeing in Cook County for some homes are to that extreme.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
That's what I was gonna feel for the extent of the numbers we're looking at.
Right.
For some of those homes.
Right.
Okay. Yes, yeah, us making sure they understand three thousand is not coming to us would be great. Like, that's not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a really good analogy. I mean, that's, that's
Right, because, but yeah, I mean, two hundred or three, yeah, that's, you know, that's a jump, but, okay.
Yep. Thank you both for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will move on. I'm just apologize, I don't have the, on agenda. So I was looking at other things. We're going to move on to the presentation, the Unite U forty-six Initiative Funding Plan.
Thank you. Think I have one.
Is it different?
Good evening again. Um, this evening we have with us, uh, Ms. Elizabeth Hen- Hennessy from Raymond James, our municipal bond advisor. And she will be presenting to us on the Unite U forty-six Funding Plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Hennessy.
Thanks for having me. Do you want to turn the slides?
Okay.
So tonight we're going to start with a market update.
Hold on a second. All right. I mean, I'm hitting the damn arrow.
Ms. Hennessy, why they call that up on the side, can I ask a real quick question? The handout that you gave us, is this um, what we're going to be seeing on the presentation online as well? Okay, thank you.
Do I just need to spell it down?
Shouldn't have to.
Even though it's a PDF?
Slide show mode or something, I don't see a little button.
It's already, uh, it's already vending escape. Or maybe I need to use the mouse instead of it?
That is kind of
I did do that. Seriously.
I apologize. All right, we're moving. Page four.
There you go.
All right, this is the triple A municipal market data interest rates for the triple A rated bonds, the strongest triple As in the country that's priced every day. And we're looking at what we call the yield curve, where on the X axis is the years from one to thirty. And on the Y axis is the interest rate. The dark line is the thirty-year historical average of interest rates. The red line is where we are as of October twenty-fifth. And as you can see, the yield curve currently is above, rates are higher than they have been on average over the last thirty years. Not a ton, but higher yet. The short-term rates uh, are higher because the Fed has increased interest rates. But what's happened since September is the intermediate and the longer-term rates are starting to increase as well. Let's go to the next slide. This shows what has happened to interest rates in the last year. And as you can see, it's been super volatile. The um, one-year treasury is in the green and the ten-year treasury bond is in the blue. And then we've got the one-year municipal bond uh, in the purple, ten-year in the red, and the thirty-year in the yellow. So these interest rates move kind of in concert. But uh, you can see since September of twenty-three, we saw interest rates go up about one percent. So the question is kind of like, why? The Fed did not increase interest rates in September, nor did they in October. They um, are talking about holding. But what's happened is we've had a shift in the um, mentality of investors. They're expecting the Fed to keep rates higher, longer, because our economic indicators have been quite strong. Um, GDP, retail sales, those things have shown that our economy is super resilient. Now, last Thursday and Friday of this week, I got a little excited because rates actually went down on Thursday and Friday, because the unemployment rate went up a little bit. So that really moved the market uh, about twenty basis points, but not enough to offset the increase that we've seen. So I think, you know, the bottom line is we're kind of in this higher rate environment for a while. Okay, let's go to the next couple pages. Page seven. The Unite forty-six includes building or additions to five schools and updates to the current elementary and middle schools. These estimated costs show uh, the various conversions to middle school, Hawk Hollow first, and as Frank mentioned, you are, you transferred money in fiscal year twenty-three to pay for that out of fund balance to the tune of about forty-five million. The new middle school located in Elgin, one hundred and ten, Kimball Middle School Edition at fifty million, estimated Kenyon Woods Middle School Edition at thirty-five million. The new elementary school estimated at fifty million. We have the estimated completion dates on these things as well. What we don't have is cost yet for updates to CMS, um, EVMS, LMS, TMS, those middle schools, nor updates to the elementary schools. So that's yet to be determined. Let's go to the next page. This, this graph shows the total of the known cost for the schools, three hundred and three million. Of the three hundred and eighty-one million that was estimated capital requirements, including the conversions to three middle schools, one new middle school, one new elementary school. And that leaves about a hundred million for updates and renovations to the middle schools and elementary schools, those TBD amounts. So um, just to remind you, Hawk Hollow is not part of these Unite forty-six going forward just because the district was able to pay for those out of cash with that transfer last year, or uh, forty-five million of it. So this is also the timing, you know, that shows when you're going to need this money, which I think is, is critically important when we're looking at when we issue bonds. Let's go to the next page. The pie chart on the left shows the original pa- plan that included a hundred and seventy-nine million of referendum bonds, a hundred million of fund balance, thirty-two million of non-referendum bonds, and seventy million of debt certificates. The plan on the right is an alternative plan with no non-referendum bonds. In that case, a hundred and seventy-nine million obviously for the referendum and two hundred and two million for uh, fund balance. So if we don't do any non-referendum debt, the future uh, fund balance increases to about two hundred million. All right, let's go to the next page. So this is operating fund balances for capital projects for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty-three. These are unaudited at this point, but this looks at the four main operating funds, the education fund, operation and maintenance fund, transportation fund, and working cash. So the ratio that we look at is the current fund balance as a percent of revenues. That measure also relates to your fund balance policy, which states a minimum fund balance of twenty percent of annual revenues in those funds. Um, so currently you are at sixty-five percent, which is great. Um, that's fund balance as a percent of revenues. If you use a hundred million for capital projects, uh, transferring money from Ed and, and working cash fund to capital projects, that brings you down to fifty percent fund balance as a percent of revenues. If you transfer a hundred and fifty million for capital, that brings your fund balance ratio down to forty-three percent. And if you transfer two hundred million for capital projects, that brings your fund balance down to thirty-six percent. So the current plan includes use of the hundred million of fund balance. And if you don't issue the thirty-two million of working cash and the seventy million of debt certificates, you may need to use up to two hundred million. So over the next several years, if fund balances continue to grow, perhaps more fund balance may be utilized for capital projects. New revenues from expiring TIFs, as was discussed in the levy presentation, is estimated at about four point six million. Because that's new property coming on and then that will become uh, part of your levy every year. And higher evidence-based funding revenues may also increase those operating surpluses. So you may have more funding available. Uh, and as I mentioned, the district's fund balance requires fund balances of only twenty percent of revenues in the operating's fund below. But I will mention that the district's bond rating is double A from Standard and Poor's. And the median fund balance ratio for the Illinois school districts for the double A category is fifty-five percent fund balance as a percent of revenue. So. Okay, let's go to the next page. You've seen this graph before. This references what we call the promise. This slide was used during a referendum campaign. During the referendum information sessions, the district promised taxes would not increase over the existing tax rate for debt service. And when reviewing funding options for the Unite forty-six Capital Plan, the goal was to use as much of district resources, including non-referendum bonds in order to minimize the referendum asked to the community. The debt service extension base is represented in this graph by the red line. Um, non-referendum bonds of thirty-two million um, combined with the referendum bonds, keep the tax rate stable and allow the district to potentially issue future DSEB or working cash fund bonds without increasing annual debt ser- debt service taxes. And you can see where the drop is in the year twenty-eight and then again in twenty thirty-three. Let's go to the next page. Um, let's, the definition of debt service extension base um, is it's the part of the district's levy that allows you to issue bonds without referendum. This comes from that nineteen ninety-four tax cap, which applied to Cook County. Ninety-one came in for the rest of the counties, but ninety-four was a Cook County tax cap law. And at that point, they, they said whatever levy you had on for non-referendum bonds, you could continue to extend as long as it didn't increase that amount. And the district's current debt service extension base is ten million, seven twenty-three, four oh eight in levy year twenty-three. The types of non-referendum bonds that the district can issue payable from the D sub include working cash bonds, life safety bonds, funding bonds, and tort bonds. So these bonds do not negatively impact the operating funds of the district and they're paid through the bond and interest tax levy uh, for the debt service extension base. Let's go to the next page. The district has a history of issuing working cash bonds paid from the debt service extension base. So often school districts issue working cash bonds to pay for capital projects because they are not subject to referendum. So in addition, working cash bonds can pay for capital items that do not qualify for life safety. Or if issued on a taxable basis, they can increase the operating funds and liquidity for a district. Um, since two thousand three, the district has issued ten new money non-referendum bonds paid from the debt service extension base, totaling a hundred and fifty-nine million, hundred and ten thousand. Of those, a hundred and twenty-two million, thirty thousand were for working cash, eighteen million, eight eighty-five were for life safety, and tort bonds were in the amounts of eighteen million, one ninety-five. The next page looks at the historical use of that debt service extension base payments um, for D sub bond, bonds. Uh, that line, the red line represents a debt service extension base which grows by CPI. The bars are the outstanding D sub bonds for non-referendum bonds issued since twenty-eleven. And the lighter gray just says, you know, here we are in twenty-three levy year, we now owe these amounts. So this is all for currently outstanding working cash bonds. And it shows that you've got more room under that red line to issue additional D sub bonds. Let's go to the next page. So the proposed thirty-two million working cash fund bonds are repaid over eleven years. They leave room in levy year twenty-twenty-eight in five years to give future boards flexibility to issue additional D sub bond debt as needed. Let's go to the next page. So the funding options that we're gonna look at are with and without working cash fund bonds. So option one shows a hundred and seventy-nine million of referendum bonds and thirty-two million of working cash bonds. So the sixty-two million, the thirty-two million working cash bonds and thirty million referendum bonds, that would be issued in January of twenty-four. Then next year, we are looking at issuing a hundred and forty-nine million of referendum bonds in January of twenty-five. And you might say, how did you come to those amounts? Well, we looked at the preliminary spend down from the architects. And if we issue sixty-two million in January of twenty-four and then a hundred and forty-nine in January twenty-five, each issuance meets the twenty-four month spend down exception to arbitrage rebate. And that is good because the district can then keep all the interest earnings on the bond proceeds while they're invested before they're being spent. So that's a federal tax law requirement. This option one also shows, shows an estimated use of ninety-two million of district fund balance. Option two shows a hundred and seventy-nine million and no working cash bonds, thirty million of referendum bonds issued in January twenty-four, a hundred and forty-nine million issued in January twenty-five, and an estimated hundred and twenty-four million of fund balance. So debt certificates and or additional fund balance, if available, would be used to address Unite forty-six updates to the existing middle schools and elementary schools. So those two TBDs are not addressed in these options. Okay, so next page is a graphic of option one. So this is updated with today's rates. Again, the sixty-two million includes the twenty or the thirty million referendum bonds and thirty-two million working cash bonds. Then we come back, and that's the yellow bars. And sorry, the yellow bars are the thirty million. The orange bars are the thirty-two million. The purple bars, which you can see start in twenty-four levy year, that's the hundred and forty-nine million. Okay, so if we go to the next page, I know the numbers are small, so I wanted you to have the paper to see them. I tried to color coordinate the orange heading is over the working cash bonds. So those, as you, as I mentioned, are paid off over ten years with room to issue more of those in twenty-twenty-eight. That's why you have the highlight, the green highlight in twenty-eight and, and going forward in the middle of the page. That shows future flexibility for future boards. The yellow is the thirty million referendum bond portion, and the dark purple is a hundred and forty-nine million. So total referendum bonds shown on this page, on this chart, is a hundred and seventy-nine and thirty-two million of the non-referendum bonds. Okay. So as I mentioned, one of the key features of the plan is it leaves district flexibility to issue additional working cash fund bonds repaid from the D seven twenty-twenty-eight while keeping the total tax rate for bonds stable. And it uses ninety-two million of fund balance versus a hundred and twenty-four million of fund balance in the next option. Okay, so let's go to the next option two. This issues thirty-two million of referendum bonds in twenty-four and a hundred and forty-nine million in twenty-five, no working cash bonds. So generally, look, this option, one of the key things is that we can, if we don't issue any more non-referendum bonds, we can pay off the referendum bonds in a much shorter time period than twenty years, if you wanted to. In fact, we could pay them off in fourteen years. And the good news about that is it saves you fifty million in interest cost. However, the schools and additions being built will last at least thirty years. And sharing the debt burden with as many users as possible over the next twenty years is more equitable. Let's look at the chart on the next page that goes along with this option. So as I mentioned, no working cash fund bonds accelerates the debt service, keeping the tax levy for debt service level. In this case, debt service payments do not drop but remain level. And we retire the referendum bonds in fourteen years instead of twenty. Paying the bonds off six years earlier saves you fifty million of interest. However, keeping total debt service level may mean future working cash bonds would increase the debt service tax rate. I think that's a key point that we'll come back to. In addition, only the taxpayers living in the district in the next fourteen years pay for the referendum approved bonds instead of the taxpayers who will enjoy the benefits of the facilities over the next twenty years. So I will mention, the original promise did talk about paying the bonds back over twenty years as well. So page twenty-one looks at option one, including working cash fund bonds. The advantages are keeps the tax rate and debt service level. It leaves room for additional working cash bonds or other D sub bonds in the future without increasing taxes. It reduces the reliance on additional fund balances or to fund Unite forty-six projects. And the disadvantage is that non-referendum bonds require additional notifications, including a petition period and a public hearing. Option two, not including working cash bonds, avoids the petition period and public hearing associated with the issue of working cash fund bonds. The other advantage, as we mentioned, saves interest cost on the referendum bonds and gives you a shorter payback period. The disadvantage is that it requires a debt service tax rate increase unless a window is built in for future working cash issuances without the working cash bond portion. Another disadvantage, it does not spread the tax burden of the referendum bonds equally over the next twenty years, and it requires more fund balance to complete the Unite forty-six projects. So the recommendation is to move forward with option one for the following reasons. It increases proceeds for Unite forty-six projects, ultimately reducing need for spending fund balance in the future, allows for future D sub bonds if needed without increasing tax rate for debt service, and keeps the debt service payback level over the next twenty years, which is consistent with the information provided pre-referendum. We have an additional section which looks at future funding opportunities for additional Unite forty-six projects. So the following examples will show additional resources available to fund Unite forty-six projects, including but not limited to safety, security, renovation, repair, technology, flexible spaces, renovations and improvements at the elementary and medical, middle schools with the sources that we've been talking about for the future, working cash fund bonds, debt certificates, and fund balance. So these resources or combination can provide the district with the addition, additional resources to fund those projects. We go to the next page, we see an example of potential working cash bonds issued in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and in thirty-five. So you can see if we were to issue bonds of this portion, we can keep the debt service flat. And just to kind of give you an idea of what the amounts of those are, I wrote it down, but I didn't print it out. But it's, it's like thirty-five million for twenty-nine and then sixty million for twenty-thirty-five. So it's a lot of flexibility for new money proceeds. And key here is it doesn't increase the tax rate for debt in the future. And then if we do the same future issuance in twenty-nine and thirty-five, we can't do it without a tax rate increase if we don't issue any working cash bonds or build a window in for future working cash bonds. So you see how the bars jump up over our current thirty-two million level debt service in this scenario. The next type of debt I want to talk about is debt certificates. So debt certificates are non-referendum debt instruments that are paid from operating funds of the district. Debt certificates do not increase taxes directly and must be budgeted for annually. Proceeds of debt certificates may only be used for capital projects. Debt certificates are authorized by resolution of the board and do not require a petition period or public hearing. In the original plan, we were looking at seventy million of debt certificates to fund plan for Unite forty-six. Seventy million could be repaid over twenty years, costing approximately five point four million in annual debt service. So if you recall, in past years, the district abated nine point six million using operating funds to pay debt service and reducing the debt service tax rate. So looking at that nine point six million, if we just pledge a portion of it, you could leverage, you know, seventy million or so. So that's another funding source. So page twenty-nine looks at the fund balances, again, using two hundred million. As we mentioned, we looked at this before upfront, but if you use two hundred million to fund Unite forty-six projects and not any non-referendum bonds, as you certainly could do, you would go down to thirty-six percent fund balance as a percent of revenues based on FY twenty-twenty-three. And as I mentioned earlier, the median liquidity ratio for double-A rated school bonds is fifty-five point four percent from Standard and Poor's. But if you were able to generate additional surpluses, building fund balances up, the two hundred million may be affordable. So those are kind of the pluses and minuses of issuing working cash bonds as part of your funding plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Board members, have any questions? Ms. Martin?
So I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna ask questions in order and pause so that other people can ask questions. So thank you for the presentation. I know when this came forward at our last meeting, which may have been a week ago, may have been five weeks ago at this point, my life is a blur. I had a, I had questions then. So let's go back to its, I want to say it's ten, where it's the slide was says operating fund balances for capital projects. And it's the first time we look at fund balance as a percent of revenues. So for the current bond rating of double A, you're mentioning the, the fifty-five percent. So if we use the hundred million, which is the plan, we would go down to fifty percent. I would assume that means we would lose the bond rating.
No, no, I don't think so, not at fifty. It's within five percent of that fifty-five. Okay. So, but I can't guarantee you wouldn't lose the bond rating if you go down to thirty-six percent.
Okay, so is there, um, okay, so there, so there's wiggle room in these percentages they use for bond ratings then, is what you're saying.
It's more than just the fund balance. There's a lot of things they look at. They look at debt. They look at wealth of the community, me, median income, median home sale value, those kind of things. But fund balance is one of the really important indicators that they look at.
Ms. Martin, I also want to highlight that this projection does not take into consideration increases in evidence-based funding, which we have seen year over year between twenty and thirty, I think it was thirty-five million this year.
I'm knocking on a lot of wood as we say the
As we say these numbers out loud, yes. So keep that in mind. This does not take that into consideration. So that would, of course, increase that percentage when you add in the additional revenue that we anticipate to receive through the evidence-based funding model.
So then, say regardless of how much we take out, say even at that fifty percent, they decide to change our bond rating. What does the change in bond rating, what would that mean for financing and for the projects we're doing?
It would mean a higher interest rate, typically by about ten basis points if you move a rating notch.
Okay.
And just to clarify, that's point one percent, is that correct?
Thanks.
Sorry, I'm taking notes. Okay, that was my questions on that slide.
Does anybody else have any questions, Ms. Kerr?
So I have a question about the slide on page twenty-six. And it looks like we have an, an increase here, but in this slide, as opposed to the slide on page twenty-four, we would, we're paying it off in fourteen years. If we had paid it off in twenty years, would this be more level?
Yes, but the rate, the tax rate would go down this year. Like if we, we didn't do any non-referendum bonds and we paid it off level over twenty years, the tax rate would go down for all of the years. And then if you issued future working cash bonds, again, because that would be an increase in allowable debt service that you could pay off, it would boost it up in that year creating an increase.
But here we're looking at a pretty substantial tax increase on page twenty-six.
Yeah. Yeah.
But if we'd smoothed it out, it'd be going down instead.
Right, if we didn't know working cash bonds. Or if you tell me, I just do not want to do working cash bonds this time, but I want to create flexibility for future boards. You tell me when, five years, twenty-eight? We can build a window in, fill in with referendum bonds upfront, but we would have some bigger decreases the longer, over the twenty-year period.
And the, the working cash bonds, we, we have about, currently about eleven million dollars payback annually. Do we know what that is for a three hundred thousand dollar house? Is that about a hundred and fifty dollars a year for? I mean, I'm looking at the other charts, I'm guessing that's what it might be.
I can figure that out for you, but I don't, didn't bring my calculator to the table. I'm always nervous to do that.
I'm, I'm looking at page twenty and, and the if you have debt service of thirty-two million, and you figure, well, if you take a third of that, you know, five hundred or four hundred and eighty thousand, yeah.
Yeah, so the debt service extension base is about that ten million, seven, eleven million a year. So, um, yeah, I, I'd say that might be about right if we just take it as a percentage of the average payment on debt for the home, three hundred thousand dollar home of five, of four hundred and eighty-three dollars.
And then take a third of that, so about one sixty. I guess my thoughts are, and this sort of goes to our earlier conversation of the levy, people don't see the debt service in the tax bill. And let's face it, the tax bills go crazy. I mean, they go up, they go down, they go everywhere, so. I guess my other thought is, we have actually ten years ago, our debt service payment was about forty-two million.
Yeah, it was much higher.
So we, we have lowered it in the, in the past, so.
You've lowered it with refunding, you've lowered it with those nine point six million abatements it used to do.
And then when we, when the abatements, we stopped abating, we had paid off enough that we could keep it lower.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm just thinking.
So they haven't experienced that forty.
Right, right. Yeah.
Ms. Martin?
Okay, so continuing with these graphs. So I am comparing pages seventeen and nineteen, so basically options one and two. So I, I understand, so the idea of spreading it out under, under over twenty years makes sense. Like that, in my head, doing the twenty versus, sorry, was it fourteen? I think that makes sense based on, you know, communities and those using the schools. Is there a, a reason that we don't have an option that is option one with the twenty years? Like, but without the orange. So like, if we did option one, which is the twenty years of the referendum, but didn't issue the thirty-two at this point, right, reserve the ability to issue those debt service bonds. The chart would step down and people would see a reduction in the bonds and interest. But we would still max it over twenty. Like, I'm trying to, like, in my head, I would like to find a better balance, I guess. Like, I like the idea, like, the idea of the twenty, the pros and cons of the two charts make sense. Option two seems so much more extreme, I think, compared to option one, where we're taking from twenty, from twenty years to fourteen years. So it's such a high, you know, where we're maxed out at that amount, and then the sudden drop off. So I, I, I'm trying to figure out if there's a way to do the twenty years and hold off on some of the debt, debt service. Because we can always, my understanding is in two years, if we realize we're not getting additional funds, issue the debt service, the, the up to the
Red line.
Thank you.
Yes, that, that's the, that's actually the good news, Mrs. Martin. What we're asking for Yes, that that's the, that's actually the good news, Mrs. Martin. What we're asking for today. Is just the first piece of piece of the funding puzzle. So if um the board supports that recommendation. A year from now, we'll know more about our EBF. We'll know more about our fund balance and what we can actually apply from fund balance. So. We don't need to finalize the entire. Funding plan. We just need to make a decision on the first piece of the funding plan. Because we do need to issue bonds by January twenty twenty-four, regardless of your decision. Um, but that's just the small initial piece we need to kick off um the project. So you will have another opportunity. Once we know more about the elementary projects, we will um be able to bring back other options for you for the second piece of the funding. Which wouldn't happen until late twenty twenty-four or probably twenty twenty-five.
And if you look at option one, it does drop down. If you go back two slides.
Yeah.
Or, yeah. It does drop down, so it it in twenty-eight, which, sorry, you know, it was seventeen. I'm going the wrong way, sorry. There we go. Yeah. It drops down in twenty twenty-eight and it drops down again really substantially in twenty thirty-four. So, you know, once you get that first piece locked in, you've met the promise. You've got the funding you need to get yourself going with the projects in the next twenty-four months. And then you'll have a drop in twenty-eight if you don't issue any more working cash bonds. And then another big drop in thirty-four. So. In this option one, we do have the referendum bonds leveled that service twenty years. But we've got that first little orange piece. Uh, of the ten-year non-referendum piece as part of that.
I just wanted to ask a follow-up question for clarification. So for that orange piece. Am I correct by assuming the reason why we're doing that orange piece is to get the project started? If we don't do that orange piece in January, it could. We could run the risk of delaying something, some work. Because we didn't issue that thirty-two million in January of twenty twenty-four?
No, ma'am. We will issue bonds whether if if the board decides that we aren't issuing working cash, we will issue enough referendum bonds. To get us started and to maintain a stable tax rate for the taxpayers as promised.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Ms. Martin?
All right, so I have uh one last question for now. So the the debt certificates.
Yes.
Of the seventy million. Uh, so I know that those are outside of these charts.
Correct.
So if we were to issue the debt certificates of the seventy million. Without. Oh, I just forgot the word. My apologies. Um, if we issue the seventy million on top of this, tax rates go up. Correct?
No, because they're paid from your current operating fund. Those debt certificates do not increase taxes. At all. You just have to make room in your budget to make those payments.
Okay.
And one of the reasons, Ms. Martin, just to the follow-up on that, one of the reasons that we showed that towards the end because. When it's time to think about issuing that, we'll know more about our EBF. We may have more fund balances and we may not need to do the debt cert certificates. Or maybe a smaller amount.
And if we do those, those come into more and and play as far as our annual budget.
Yep.
We would know.
Part of your savings account that you're spending, you're planning to spend.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
So I have a couple of questions and. And slide nineteen with the option two. I'm struggling to understand why why we're showing this. Why we're paying this off sooner than we're paying off. Option one, if these are twenty-year bonds, why are we? Showing this as as being paid off sooner, just simply because we have. Less debt, so we have the. Funding.
Because you didn't, if if you elect this option and you don't issue the working cash, you have more. Bonding capacity to pay off each year. So that's why you'd be able to pay them off early.
But it was also just to maintain our.
Yes, to keep the tax rate flat.
But if we don't pay them off early, then the tax rate would go down.
That is correct.
And and then.
So. Oh, sorry.
I was just saying, then I think just the disadvantage would be if we didn't do working cash bonds now, but we elected. At some point to come back into later, that would represent a tax increase at that point because of the way we instruct these referendum bonds with lower payments per year. That makes sense.
So. I mean, I. You know, it seems like we're. We've got a couple of different goals that we're trying to accomplish, right? Aside from wanting to fund the you for unite you forty-six projects, right? So we we want to keep the debt service level. So that we don't have those fluctuations and have to go back.
Yeah.
To issue bonds and cause a tax increase. We also want to preserve our fund balance internally, right? And we also want to preserve our bond rating. So all of those things are kind of playing into this, right? But then like what Ms. Kerr brought up. Is even if there are these small fluctuations where perhaps the tax. Goes down a little bit for our debt service. It's not necessarily being felt or seen by our taxpayers because it's not broken out. To them. And so we're in a, we're in a situation right now where we're at a high. CPI environment. We're in a high interest rate environment. Most people have seen an increase in their taxes anyway. And their overall property taxes anyway, right?
Yes, but you'd see a higher increase than if you ever did decide to go up because we're still going to be. We're always entitled to that consumer price index increase on the cap funds. So you'll see that increase plus a debt increase if you were to allow for the decline and then come back in future years and want to. Add working cash bonds after the fact.
But if we make the assumption that at some point CPI will fall below five percent. Which historically it has, right? I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, saw with with Dr. Frank and the the slide for the first part of the presentation that historically those rates have been around.
Two and a half, two point three eight, I think, for the first ten years.
So if we delay right now, taking the working cash bonds while perhaps. Funding them, funding that that gap, you you said we could apply more of the referendum funds. A referendum bonds in the short term to leave that window. To be able to issue working cash bonds at a later date. If we're able to do that, once the CPI comes down below. Five percent and our our tax levy is not so high. Then I don't know that that, I mean, as a as a property owner. I would feel that as not being a tax increase. Does that make sense? So our levy at some point will go below five percent. We think. Maybe.
It might.
It might.
But we don't know how much. We don't know if it will ever go back to the historic lows of two percent. One and a half, we don't know.
Yeah, and I mean, that's 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 the biggest problem with this is we just don't know, right? But I mean, it's so, I guess what I'm asking or what what I'm, what I'm trying to think through in my mind is. Is there a way to delay? Issuing the working cash bonds at this moment when we know that CPI is so high. And give ourselves a little bit of extra cushion. Hoping that CPI comes down at some point and our overall tax levy comes down.
The portion of the levy that is the debt service in comparison to the cap funds is small. So while I understand what you're saying, I don't know that. The savings. Would be substantial enough, given the size of the cap funds and and I'm. Liz is nodding, so I'm assuming she agrees with that, but I don't know if the impact that you'd be seeking by taking that step would be felt by the taxpayers due to the size of the capped. Funds.
Right. And the other thing, if you go back to option one. Just two slides up. Wrong way back. Yeah, there we go. The orange bars. So like if we take. Those out, that thirty-two million. And the whole structure kind of drops down and we keep with a twenty-year. The debt, a- as we've mentioned multiple times now, future working cash bonds will boost the whole thing up. So it'll be a tax increase, but I know it's a smaller portion of your overall levy, so maybe people won't feel it. But the other thing you're doing, if you do that, is you're leaving money on the table. Meaning if you don't access. The levy for the working cash bonds. Next year. The twenty-three levy is gone. The following year, the twenty-four levy is gone. It's similar to how you levy. Why you levy CPI and new property on your operating funds. It's. It is leaving some money on the table. And given the large capital plan that you've got coming up, the fact that this plan fits within the promise to the taxpayers. I would hate to see you come up short later on in. You know, and have to issue bonds that are going to increase. The debt service levies, because you know, it's. I I understand your point right now. It it's a hard time with five percent last year and five percent this year.
Yeah.
Um, it it is definitely uh stressful. But. Few down the road. Someone's going to say, Dr. Williams and Ms. Hennessy, what were you thinking dropping those levies so that we have to increase taxes to do these new bonds? I mean, I'm very conscious of the promise. I just feel that. You know, it would be difficult and and the board here may make that decision. The board down the road five years may come back and say, why did you make that decision? Just. Perspective and and thirty years of experience of working with school boards. Where. We try to keep things very level.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions?
Dr. Johnson, can I get to? Again, can I get to ask a question? So so it seems as though just, you know, listening and taking notes, right? We're we're in this place, we're trying to determine the variables. That we don't have control over and the variables that we have more control over. And trying to identify of those. Right? Are we spurred to take actions sooner than later because we potentially have greater control over utilizing the majority or more funds? To the greater, greater benefit. That's that's kind of what I when I'm hearing. As questions or considerations from the board, as well as then the response that. Is it accurate that the the options that are outlined, one is a more aggressive manner to control? I mean, it could be viewed aggressively, maybe that's not the correct word, to control the variable that we do have actually more kind of reach. At or control over, I'm using control multiple times. And then there's one. Where if we delay, we are potentially kind of yielding some of that control and the the variable or the unknown is greater.
That is correct. If you take option two, you're restrict, you're restricting. Future boards, you're restricting your ability to adjust your plan based on EBF increases and things of that nature. Um, whereas option one. Gives you as much as much flexibility as it can, given. The situation and all of the unknown factors.
So CPI, that continues to be.
Yes, and unknown.
A bit of an unknown.
Yes. And while the averages were in the two percent range previously, the last two years have been five percent. They've been capped, so we don't know what the future holds with that. We do know that the state will likely increase our evidence-based funding allocations um to move us closer to equity. As they do with all of the districts in tier one.
And my final question is. With option one, I mean, obviously we're going right up to our our debt service limit. That. Won't have any effect on our bond rating or on any other.
No.
Okay.
Oh, man.
Any other questions?
I think what's interesting, and if you go back, if you was when we pulled up the historical D sub borrow, we pretty much borrowed up to that line. That we look back on the last ten or fifteen years, and in my understanding, there's a lot of school districts that is access to. Borrowing for capital projects that where you don't require referendum. So I think it is pretty typical that that you. District would tap into um every bit they could then.
Yeah, I believe Liz mentioned that we've issued those bonds. Ten times. And if you look at this slide, we have um. You can see going all the way back to twenty eleven, we have maxed out the debt service um with those non-referendum bonds. And most school districts do utilize the maximum that they have for that purpose.
Okay, thank you all for your presentation.
Thanks.
The next item we have on our agenda is public comments. Dr. Johnson, do we have any?
We do not have any public comments for the committee meeting.
Okay. So given that, I will declare the meeting closed at five twenty-six PM. Thank you, everyone.